Good afternoon. We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see everyone, with those of you in the audience, as well as on watching us livestream. At this time, we ask Mr. Mosley, if he will, again, please come lead us in our invocation, and then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand for those two items.
Let us pray.
Father God, we thank you for your bountiful blessings. We thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We ask now, Father, for your grace and your mercy upon this meeting as this deliberative body discuss and vote on policies and procedures and things that we want to do to improve and make Liberty County a better place. Father God, we continue to pray that you would be with us. We ask that you would touch all the families who are grieving and all the families who are going through COVID-19. These and all and the many blessings you do for us, we ask, and thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank the audience. We'll ride along with our meeting per agenda. First, item four, awards and recognitions. Proclamation. Awards and recognitions first. Mr. Brown?
Chairman, this is a proclamation recognizing our highest appreciation month for September, and you're probably here.
Okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate you guys having me this evening. Each year across the country during the month of September, local governments recognize the month of September as firefighter appreciation month. Our firefighters here with Liberty County Fire have been and continue to make this and all of Liberty County, Liberty County proud, and I cannot thank them enough for making the change and the difference every day, night, rain, shine, whatever the case may be. Not only do we want to recognize the firefighters, but we also want to recognize their families and their loved ones. These firefighters working for us will spend a third of their year away from their families every single year at a minimum, who in moments' notice could be responding to a member of the public involved in a traffic accident or a structured fire. These family members and loved ones pray for the safe return of not only their firefighter, but all of our public safety. September is deemed the month in recognition for the greatest loss of a single number of firefighters during the incidents that took place on September 11, 2001. During the month of September, Liberty County Fire will have a coloring contest starting on September 1st and would need to be submitted no later than September 20th, and that coloring sheet can be found on Liberty County website starting on September 1st for download or pickup at our office. Winners of the coloring contest will be awarded their prize at the firefighter family fun day on September 24th at Gil Park, where we will have plenty of activities going on. We're looking at trying to get a dunk tank, some bounce houses, spray some water for the kids. So I encourage the public, come out and have fun with their Liberty County firefighters.
What's that date again for the event at Gil Park?
It'll be September 24th, sir. It's a Saturday.
You will send us a general reminder, we'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
A strong one for me.
Well, we thank you all for what you do. You had a pretty good month. You're dedicated. We did groundbreaking, and then the appreciation activities. So, and these Commissioners can chime in, we certainly appreciate what the firefighters do. A good bit of them did attend the groundbreaking ceremony. We're happy to see them, and in fact, I was glad the courage shows that picture to post of them doing the groundbreaking.
Yes, sir.
So please carry back our appreciation for them for what they do every day. At this time, Commissioners, if you all have any comments, we'll entertain those at this time on behalf of our firefighters. Let me speak for all of them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now, do we need to put a signature on that?
We have, and if you allow me to, I'll read it, sir, for you, and we can do a photo op. Proclamation, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, firefighter's appreciation month. Whereas firefighter's appreciation month was established to remember and bring awareness to support those firefighters, their families, and the communities they serve, and whereas the role of the firefighter in today's society, be it urban, rural, natural environment, volunteer, career, industrial, defense force, aviation, and motorsports, is one of dedication, commitment, and sacrifice, no matter what country they reside and work in. And whereas the firefighter's appreciation month recognizes those firefighters and their families, who have served their communities for most of their lives, and those who have served for just a few short years, and whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends, who protect us without wanting of recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of the community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize our firefighters during the month of September and year round for their courage, selfless service, and sacrifice, signed this 18th day of August, 2022.
Commissioners, if you all would gather around, I think we're gonna make this a photo op for Mr. Darby, Chief Darby.
May we come up with nothing? You got to stand.
Yeah, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rhonda said somebody needs to move over a little bit.
Yeah, you're gonna need to move a little bit to your left.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's appreciate our firefighters. Summer youth program recognitions.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, and I certainly don't take any crap for this, wonderful team that put together the total youth program comprised of not only the youth, but also certain departments within the county realm, also some individual businesses that participated too. So at this time, Mr. Murray is here that helped lead that program with Mr. Mosley, and they'd like to make those recognitions for you.
What's going on, everybody? Like I said, like Mr. Joy said, led by Mr. Joseph Mosley. I appreciate everybody that helped work this out, and thank you all for putting this program together for the youth and the community. It is very needed, and they definitely appreciate it every year that we have it. So without any further ado, we want to go ahead and make some recognitions, starting off with Mr. Bob Sprinkle. Is he here?
Oh, he's here.
Mr. Bob Sprinkle, what's up, man? Mr. Bob, y'all go ahead and make some noise for Mr. Bob as he come up here. Great guy. Actually started off the program with him when he was here, so he helped. Yeah, yeah, let's do it. Shake hands, let's do all that. Y'all like to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, he wanna say some stuff. All right, so next after Mr. Bob Sprinkle, we have Dr. Nancy Franklin. Yeah, it's okay to clap, y'all can clap. Mr. Thomas Duke III? Ms. Crystal Hensler?
Yeah.
No, you're good. You got two of them. Yeah. All right, next we have Ms... Yeah, I'm about to call him Bob Dodd. Mr. Robert Dodd. After that, we have Mr. Clint Stanley.
Yeah.
Making all that noise, man. Yeah. Ms. Carmella Orr? Ms. Rhonda Wathour? Ms. Maria Tartt? Voter registration and elections department? I know, that's all, that's Ms. Carmella Orr and Ms. Rhonda Wathour. Next, we have emergency management agency department. Mr. Robert Dodd again. And then we have emergency medical services department. It's EMA, Ms. Crystal Hensler. EMS, see, I always do that. EMS. FT department, IT department. Lord, I can't see. FaceTime department. Lord, Jesus. Yes, we have voter registration and elections department. The finance department. Yes. The administration department. Yes, all the money. It's Mr. Joy. Okay, the other departments are not here, but we again want to appreciate everybody that helped with the summer youth employment program. Thank y'all for taking their hand with the youth, and we appreciate y'all, and we look forward to y'all helping us out next year again as well, too. Thank y'all.
Ready, one, two, three.
Dang retiree. See ya.
Really, I was reading that magazine today, Georgia Twin, I was reading about Augusta and their summer program, and I thought, yeah, Liberty County's right in there. We have a similar program that's doing great. It talks about the experiences for young people and how it makes a difference in their future, so. There you go.
There we go, Bob.
There you go. Thank you for your part in that, Bob. We've been in the early years, we appreciate you helping to get that started. Departmental reports, finance, Ms. Claire McGlock.
Hello. You have before you your June report, hot off the press, so I want to go over a few things with you, and then at the end of my report, I actually have a budget amendment that we need to approve to amend your budget for those things that I've been telling you all along through the year that we're gonna have to go back and amend for. So at the end of June, we actually, we achieved 132% of our budgeted revenues. So as you can see, we had a lot more revenues than we budgeted for, and that's on, that's going to be part of your budget amendment. A little misleading, because when you look down the line items, we achieved about 99% of our taxes that we budgeted, 115 of charges for services, more, 115% fines and forfeiture. So both of those line items, we actually achieved more than we budgeted. Same for intergovernmental grants and miscellaneous revenues. The other financing sources that you see down there, the actual revenue being 12.6 million, 12.5 million of that is a bond issue that took place in the month of June. Governmental accounting is the only place I know where you can record long-term debt as revenue, so that's what we've done here. Yeah, go figure. Expenditures, we actually spent about 103.7% of our budgeted expenditures, and again, we're gonna amend that budget so that you'll fall in line. But the line items that actually went over are the other financing uses, and again, those are the operating transfers out and your debt service kind of stuff. We'll talk about those because that's part of your budget amendment. Debt service, the same thing, but your salaries and benefits, your purchased services, those are all within their budget. They didn't exceed their budget, but in total, we still went over slightly. So at the end of the day, we had more revenues than we had expenditures, but again, that was because of that bond issue. So when you turn to the next page and you go to your balance sheet, this time last year, we had five point two months' worth of operational expenditures in our unreserved, undesignated fund balance. At the end of this year, we had eight point two months' worth of operational expenditures. And again, that's because of that 12.5 million infusion that we got during the month of June, so it's a little misleading. I want everybody to get all happy like we're doing so much better. That was because we had a bond issue.
Kim, I gotta ask you something, but that skewed, is what you're saying, so...
It's definitely skewed it.
If you were to take that out, though, how would we be...
We did not achieve 100% of our revenues, however, we did not, without that, we wouldn't have made some of those debt service payments. So we would have been right at the mark, like, I mean, real close. You actually budgeted to use, I want to say, a little over a million dollars in fund balance. You actually didn't have to do that. At the end of the day, we didn't have to use fund balance, so that's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing. There are some departments that did exhaust their budget. They're part of your budget amendment that I'll present to you. So the assessors office, they ran over budget because of an unbudgeted settlement that was charged there. Bureau of Professional Standards and Bureau of Police Services, both of those departments went over budget. However, when you look at all of the sheriff's budgets, which includes the sheriff, Bureau of Professional Services, Bureau of Police Services, jail operations, and Flemington Law, collectively, he's actually within his budget. So even though two departments ran over, three departments had savings, so at the end of the day, in total, he had about $76,000 that he didn't utilize. So when you talk about $12 million, I think that might collectively have been his budget, that's pretty darn good. Pretty good there. Animal, sorry, the coroner, of course, I talked to you about those unbudgeted vehicles that we purchased, and they also went slightly over in some professional services as well, so we'll amend that budget. And then your last two line items, debt service and other financing uses. So the debt service, we paid off the mortgage note on the fire station that we took out, like, two years ago? Two years ago. That was about $613,000 that we paid off once we got the bond proceeds. We also did an operating transfer out to the capital fund where we had accumulated a little over, a little over $500,000 in the past two years for expenses that related to the EMS building and the fire building. So once we got that infusion, we went ahead and did the transfer out to close that out so that that doesn't sit over there owing the general fund, so that's now taken care of. And then we had the enterprise lease agreement, which we weren't really sure how that was gonna pan out or the full, I guess, impact of that because of the way that the cars, the vehicles were gonna come in and some of those delays, so that ran over as well. But collectively, we actually did pretty good.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Kim, how many vehicles did we purchase for the coroner?
Two.
Two?
And those together, I want to say, were right around $82,000 or $83,000 together, but then he ended up running over, like I said, in professional services. Might have been fuel, too. I'd have to see.
Okay.
Okay. Solid waste. Solid waste actually had a small net loss this year, and I can kind of explain that, too. It's a combination of a couple of things. They had more depreciation this year because of some of their newer pieces of equipment that we purchased that came online and actually got a full year depreciation this year. Secondly, even though we were within our budget expenditures, we spent 99% of our budgeted expenditures, we only took in about 98% of our budgeted revenues. One big thing, I don't know if you all recall this, we stopped billing the city of Flemington for their solid waste in January because that's gonna go on the tax bill that's gonna be billed hopefully in October or November. So all along, we had been billing them on a monthly basis. That was revenue we were taking in. So we didn't get any of that revenue from January forward, so that was part of the issue, too, but that revenue will come back in the form of the solid waste assessment because now we're gonna bill for that service at a higher rate. That was part of the study that y'all did, so we're gonna bill them for that service on their tax bills, so you'll see that come in. But that is why there, this year, there's a small net loss. I also want to tell you, we don't, we didn't finalize the closure post-closure because I'm still waiting on that estimate from Mr. Long's office, so there'll be some, there'll be some more tweaks that go into this before we give the final trial balances to the auditors, but for the most part, this is accurate. Let's see, if you go over, all of the departments within solid waste, all operated within their budget with the exception of solid waste disposal, and that had to do with the professional services, they ran over slightly for professional services. That was that added cost study that you wanted to expand on, that we had to go out and do some more studying for curbside polycart. That wasn't budgeted. And then the services for haul and disposal costs went up more this year than they did last year, so we saw a little increase in that line item as well. But in total, they still stayed within their budget. All of your special...
Did they not give us a heads up that expenses are gonna be more? Did we not have that?
It's based on the Consumer Price Index for goods and services, that's solid waste.
Moving target.
Yes, so they increased that inflation.
Okay, all right.
All of your special revenue funds came in under budget, so that's all doing good. Sales tax, still doing great. Your sales tax came in a little over a million for June, so at the end of June, we're actually $5 million ahead of schedule. Yeah, so we're definitely gonna exceed the $54 million because we're already up to $51.2 million, and that was supposed to collect $54 million, but we're definitely gonna go over that, which is a good thing. Sales tax continues to just grow. T-splos, the same thing. At the end of June, we're about $400,000 ahead of schedule for t-splos revenues, so all your sales tax are doing great. That's all I have for your report, unless somebody has specific questions.
Joey and Kim, we have an itemized sheet of what we can spend the sales tax on. I mean, we know where that's at, and obviously, we know what we, you know, we can't pay salaries or nothing like that out of it, but again, what Commissioner Thrift said about the, or the chairman said about the, this solid waste, I mean, is that something that's gonna happen year after year, or do they go up because the fuel went up? I mean, if the heaven went up on, you know, since the fuels went up, we can look for that to happen before the year's out.
They have, Commissioner Walden, in their contract document with us, that there's a fuel escalation clause along with a CPI clause. They're all geared to that listing that's put out for goods and services. So it's built in, so to speak, it's just that we had such an anomaly with the inflationary costs and stuff, but definitely, it increases every year, it's been doing that on us ever since contract was engaged.
Okay, and...
But the good news is your solid waste rates are gonna be adjusted on this next tax bill.
That's true.
Because that's what you went through the study before, so that's the good news.
You told me it's gonna be adjusted as in...
Up.
We had not increased our solid waste assessments for years, and that was how the cost study first started, and then after we did that and got the new rates, then we expanded that cost study to talk about curbside polycart. But the initial study was just so that we could adjust our rates and then figure out what the rate would be for those Flemington residents who we had normally been billing the city of Flemington for on a monthly basis. Now they're going to be charged for their solid waste service on their tax bill like everybody else in the county.
Well, the other thing that's kind of bothering me is on our, on our solid waste, we're still in the same place, and you know, we discussed it in this meeting, everything's going to the same place, whether Commissioner Gillard's group is picking them up Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or whatever, but he's having to, there's an additional, more customers, and somewhere in there, we're gonna have to expand our piece of, you know, our structure down there. So, you know, getting the, what you want to call it, you know, the little bit more money, are we gonna be able to build that structure with sales tax? Are we gonna be able to have to build it out of this? I mean, this is a, you know, the solid waste fund, so are we gonna have to take it out of it? I mean, we can't...
No, you're exactly right. I think you have to look at expansion of the pad down there to be able to handle more garbage over time. None of that cost is rolled into your solid waste fund right now, nor was it included in capital improvements that were looked at with the rate adjustments that you just did. You could put that in a splash, if you wanted to, to fund those capital improvements when you determine how much it's gonna cost, and we really ought to go ahead and get a handle on expanding that site.
Well, I don't think expanding it down there is a bad thing, Joey, but I've said before that our growth is on the west end from Heinzville that way. I mean, we are bringing water into some of those areas, but, I mean, we're having to haul it, you know, the price of fuel from these convenience centers all the way down there, so that would be my first thought, is to be looking at that and then trying to find out, do we need a bond to get this done? Can we pay for it with sales tax? And I don't know that we can. I mean, right now, you know, taxpayers is paying for the, the trash. So, I, I think that's gonna have to be something that's gonna seriously be looked at.
I agree.
And, and Commissioner Thrift had mentioned about the automobiles that was at the coroner's office and the price of them. But now, I was under the impression that those were already budgeted for his office.
So, it was something we should've included in the enterprise lease? To tell you the truth, it wasn't put in the enterprise lease, and that's the reason they had to be captured like this.
So, but I mean?
So, it wouldn't necessarily be, wouldn't have necessarily been in his budget under the enterprise to begin with.
For, for the prior year, though, is what I'm saying. Because he's had them, what, since? He's had them since March?
I think March or April.
Maybe six months or so.
So, would that have been in?
Would, would've been in this?
It wasn't in last year's budget?
Yes, or the budget we, we wrapped up, which is what this report covers.
In June?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Would've been captured. That's when we started doing the enterprise acquisitions.
Right.
It was last.
Those aren't enterprise cars.
They are not enterprise cars, but they probably will become enterprise cars as we start to rotate stuff out.
Okay.
And then get them on that site.
Well, he had mentioned to me that, that, that he had two, and that's what was kinda, is this for last year or is this for this year? So, this right here is not something that we're gonna wind up having to buy. We've already purchased.
Yes, sir, that was, this was last year.
Okay.
This year. I mean, for last?
We'll make sure that we, that I'm clear. I mean, everybody else.
Yes, sir.
They may pay better attention. I'm a little ADD.
So, and I do believe there was some escalation in some projection in that solid waste cost study for increased garbage, because they did go out and they did pick up the, the new housing development so that they could project that out. And when they did that, when they put together the, the CIP for, for just solid waste to show what needed to be replaced, what type of equipment needs to be, be replaced in each year, they took that into account. Now, I don't, I don't believe they took into account increasing the size of the pad, but they probably took into account more trucks. Which means?
Volume.
You take it more often.
Well, I mean, they did go out and, and, and look at it, but they also charged us for it. So, whether we bought it or not and followed their lead, then we still got, we, we've gotta build it with that, you just called it skewed the budget. Well, that's what we've done, you know? We paid for somebody to tell us something that we didn't need. Maybe the next time, we, me and Gary, we can hit them every Friday.
I think.
We're going tomorrow to look. But, I mean, I, you know, I, I appreciate all that you do, but I mean, it's still, somewhere in here, I was trying to add up, is there any possible way to roll something back? Because, you know, the taxpayers would rather us use what sales tax we can and roll the millage back to, I know my, my folks would, and that's what I'm up here to do, but, you know, we'll look at it, I guess, trash is trash and?
It is separate from the general fund, you're right. But as Joey said, you, you could, you could use sales tax proceeds for any capital items, even if it is for solid waste. You can still use sales tax six, can't you?
It would, um?
As long as it's on the referendum.
It wasn't on the referendum.
It wasn't on the referendum.
You could use it, and you, and it's not proposed to be on the referendum for sales tax seven. So, you may.
It would have to be on the referendum.
It would have.
So, you couldn't even use it for a land acquisition either?
No, sir.
I tell you, we caught between a rotten and a hard place here and that, because we can't, there's not gonna be the room down there, and those folks are having to cross the railroad track. And I don't know how many times Clint's had to have blue lights and sirens down there because of somebody getting hit. So, you know, it's just, that's a bad intersection for even for the city of Hinesville's and Waldauville's trucks, but I'd say we need to get a committee together to look at that. That's a, a real dangerous intersection, and it's filling up, so let's, I mean, we know what a landfill was. We, how many of them did we have?
One big one.
Right.
That expanded several times.
But it, it's, it's a lot of customers that, that go down there. I mean, we, we've increased the number of trucks during our day-to-day operation, you know, from four to five, and with the growth in Hinesville, that's gonna be six or seven. And then, we got, we could go down there sometime, we could pick up all the trash in Hinesville, and the route is done. But the line is so long down there because there's so many other people trying to get in there. And, and as the, the county grows, we're gonna have even more and more and more. So, it's, it's gonna be, having something at another location may help, help counteract that a little bit.
I would agree. So, what I gave you is the budget amendment. Those revenues of $12.5 million. That was the bond issue, like I said. In normal accounting, you record that as debt. In governmental accounting, you record that as revenue. So, when you increase your revenues to that point, you turn around and you have to match the expenses, because you have to maintain a balanced budget. So, what I've got listed on here are five items that have already been paid and charged to your fiscal year 22 budget. And then, the other I've put in there, but basically, it won't be spent until 2023 or 2024 because those are construction projects. But this just goes ahead and finalizes amending your budget and maintaining a balanced budget. So, like I said, we paid off the fire station mortgage note. We transferred out to the capital fund, so the capital fund does not owe the general fund anymore for those costs that they've been accumu, it's been accumulated in there for the last two years. The bond issuance cost, the cost that the coroner's office ran over budget, and then the, the cost for the assessor's settlement. And then, the balance, again, is gonna be held and will probably be spent. I mean, if those, if we had the bills and we could pay for the fire station and the EMS station right now, we would, but they're not done yet. So, that'll just be, it's actually fund balance that will be held and then carried over, because we're not gonna spend that money. So, that's why I said held for fiscal year 23 and 24.
Is there any ARPA money left for this, Mr. Chairman? Joey?
Not for this. Those are actually going towards, you know, your appropriate ARPA money for the fire station.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The, the, I thought the coroner's office qualified for some ARPA money.
Not, not for ARPA.
To be here, or whatever he ran over.
And there is ARPA money budgeted for EMS and the fire, but it took more than what ARPA could support. So, you're gonna have multiple funding sources, this, this bond, plus the money we've already paid out of sales tax six, plus the money we will spend in the future. So, collectively, you've got like three different pots of money that we've had to, to pull from in order to do those projects.
So, the, Ms. Chairman, just so I understand, so this amount, we approved this amendment will be, it's held over for the fiscal year 23, 24? Is that correct?
Correct.
It will come?
It just goes into your fund balance.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
So, in the next couple of years, when we need to, to pay for the fire department or EMS building, we will use fund balance to this amount.
Okay, okay.
Really, this is a, a bookkeeping maneuver?
It is. It, it is a bookkeeping.
Yeah.
Yes. Otherwise, you, we get a little nasty grant from the Department of Audits asking us why we've gone over budget on certain things, and I have to explain to them why we didn't amend our budget or why, you know, one department went over and we didn't amend the budget.
All right. Okay.
When's the latest we can amend the budget on something like that?
You can amend it all the way up until the audit is issued, actually. I mean, we, we finished up the years.
Right.
These are non-audited numbers. And I said, they're still gonna be tweaked to some extent because e, even though I've, I've given you this, in my mind, we're trading off timeliness for a little bit of accuracy because during the month of August and September, we still receive invoices for June services that we have to book to last year. So, even though I'm giving you this, these, these are not the final audited numbers. And we, we will still continue to accrue some things back to fiscal year 2022 until I say, okay, that's, we've gotta stop, I've gotta provide trial balances to the auditors. And from that point on, it's up to them to pick up things that are not charged to prior year. But again, until they issue the audit and say, okay, this is it, we're issuing the audit, you can't change your budget now because it's in the audit. Basically, you could change it or amend it up to the point that they finalize it and issue an opinion on it.
All right. Chairman, take a motion.
Yeah. Make a motion that we amend the budget for the amount shown.
Is that second?
Second.
Which is second? We amend the budget for the amount shown, I think. Ms. McGough has done a good job of that. But there, I wanna make sure there's no more questions. All in favor, let it be known by she of hands, please. Any opposition? All right, thank you, ma'am.
All I have.
Appreciate it.
Only the accountant really goes to jail, right?
I told, told my accountant, love. Not when she's near retirement.
Well, they, they can go and get you out of retirement.
Engineering. It's not Trent. Brandon.
You look a whole lot better than Trent.
Well, thank you. Trent actually got caught away with a family emergency is why I'm here today. Those who don't know me, Brandon Purcell with Tierra Long Engineering.
Let me, let me say this, Brandon, well, you all may not know, Trent's mother had surgery, so let's keep her in prayer as she recovers from surgery. He's had to go and tend to mama.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I understand.
All right.
But if there's any questions, y'all should have a, a copy of the act of projects in front of you. If there's any questions about any particular item, we can go over those first. If not, I'm open to any questions we might have that y'all would like to, I'll try my best to answer. And if I can't find you the answer today, I can get it for you later.
I kinda like Trent short. Yeah. Just got, and I hadn't really looked at this thing yet, but what's the status on the Trade Hill Road project?
Trade Hill? I knew that one was in here, and we were actually doing. I know, I read it earlier.
Mr. Brown, do you have idea?
I don't, Commissioner Stevens, I was looking to see, because I don't see it in here.
I don't see it on this report.
Thought I read it in here when I was going over it earlier.
I don't know.
Road, Eller.
All right, we won't waste time, and that'd be one question for Trent. He can reply back to the?
Got it.
To us. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
What happened on Island's Highway? I saw your email, you said you was gonna make a trip. What's the status on that?
I did. So, I talked to Mr. Long actually yesterday about that, and, and they aren't finished. They are still working to correct repairs down there. So, so that strip is not in completed state. And he's already been in touch with them, Brandon's probably aware of that one. But they, they've already been in touch with them about getting those like they should be.
Right.
But it, 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 they're not finished.
Okay.
It won't be left like that.
Yeah, we've been out there and marking up where they need to do repairs at, so flagged them, I believe, last week and talked with the contractor.
Okay. And the last question, I don't know if it's for Trent. Clint, uh, Trent. We've got full splash projects going on right now. We don't have no splash signs up at all. Don't know that we have any available, or do we?
We can, we can check and find out. Commissioner Stevens, I apologize.
But we've got the Miller Park, the Miller Fire Station, the Sam Harris Gym, EMS Station, and pretty soon to have maybe another one coming up. So, possibly five projects that the citizens don't know how it's being built. And if we want to give this, want them to support splash, we need to advertise how it's being paid for.
We probably need to look at, get a count of how many signs we have.
Yeah, we may need to order some more.
I know we, we did the redesign.
We did.
Couple of years ago, but?
We, we did, and those are the ones we've been using. I know we gave some to the city of Hinesville because they didn't have any for a couple of the things they're going on. So, we'll, we'll double check. Mr. Mosley's talked with Public Works already, so we'll follow up.
And then, we, we might need to look at a new redesign, because I saw a county that's clo, really close to us, and their signs look just like ours, so.
We must add something good going.
Absolutely.
Ms. Chairman, I was just wondering about the EMS building. Have they started?
They have. They've al, they've started on it.
Broke ground on?
So, we finally got the site, I say cleared, but ran into some problems with compaction there and had to remove and put back. But it has been cleared to go. They've delivered steel to the project, and, and we're supposed to try to pour this week. Rain may, you know, hamper that. They're supposed to try to pour footers this week. They're installing the water line.
Right.
That connects to that, all the way in the back, and that's part of your report in here.
We've loaded all the 16 we have and waited on pipe for the 12-inch now that's been backordered, so.
Right.
Good.
That was the only action I saw today when I passed by. Looked like they were working on the water line coming up to 17.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you.
All right, development impact fees, Mr. Ross.
We got a ball game at 6:15. Walk up there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am Bill Ross with Ross Associates. And I'm not here to sell you anything, but I had been asked to kind of give you an overview of what, what the heck impact fees are all about and what they aren't all about also at the same time. Little back, little bit of background on us. Also, I'm, I'm here with Paige Hatley. She, she's my right-hand woman with regard to our impact fees. We work together on a lot of, a lot of these projects. But we do comprehensive plans, we do codes and ordinances, various kinds of implementation programs, and impact fees are one of those, one of those things that we, that we do work on, and, and we do a lot of them. This is just a quick list of cities and counties that we have done impact fees for. Basically, we've done the vast majority of cities and counties that have adopted impact fees. So, why, why even have impact fees? The, the basic idea is that new growth and development does not pay its own way. As, as you do grow and you need another fire truck, or you need another building or whatever, the folks who are here today, the taxpayers here today are the ones who pay the majority of the cost of improvements that you really need to serve your growth, the new folks, because you're gonna use your sale, uh, sales tax maybe, splash, property taxes, whatever. The people who are here today are the ones paying the vast majority of those, of those taxes. Now, as new growth happens, they start paying taxes also. But compared to the, the taxes generated by new growth compared to all the other people and businesses in the county, it's a very small amount. It, it, it grows over time, of course. But the whole idea behind impact fees is to try to find a way that new growth and development that is requiring additional buildings, additional vehicles, et cetera, it's a way to get new development to pay their quote "fair share." And fair share is the critical term with regard to impact fees. You can't just go out there and whack, whack them upside the head with taxes. You have to show why new growth and development is demanding or will need additional services, vehicles, et cetera, in order to maintain the level of service. Level of service is a critical concept in impact fees. It might be a, how many square feet of public parks do you have per household? And once you establish the level of service, in order to maintain that level of service, as you grow, you're gonna need some more acres in parks. as you grow, you're going to need some more acres in parks. And so, impact fees say, well, those extra acres that you need to get because growth is growing and you don't want your level of service to go down, that's what the impact fee is all about. To pick up specifically from new growth, the cost of, the cost of growing, I guess I could just say it simply like that. This is a good example here. If you think of the bars on the bottom, imagine that that is your existing tax base. Year in, year out, the folks who are here today will continue to pay property taxes, sales taxes, et cetera, as the county grows. The lighter blue is okay in this little example, that's new growth and development. They're going to pay taxes too, but you can see that while new growth and development is slowly paying more and more and more every year, the folks that are here today are continuing to pay their taxes also. So the idea behind impact fees is to have new growth and development pay its fair share. Not too much, not too little, its fair share of the cost of providing the services that they need. More fire trucks, well, that's not a really great example, but more parks and recreational land and that sort of thing. EMS, again, I think that's privatized quite a bit in the county, but there again, somebody's going to have to pay those medics to come arrive at your house while you're having a heart attack. And the more of them that are there, the more often somebody's got to go out and take care of somebody's heart attack. So there's a, as an, if you got into the impact fee business, as a new community, you would need to have an advisory committee. That is, that's required in the law. It's required the first time you go through an impact fee study. And again, the law's very specific. You can't have more than 10 people on that committee, you got to have at least five. And of the people on your advisory committee, at least 50% of them must be in the development business one way or another. Might be a mortgage banker, might be an actual home builder, subdivider, engineers, et cetera, so that the folks who are deeply involved in future growth and development in the county would be on that advisory committee to advise you as the impact fee study goes forward. There are specific things in the impact fee law. The impact fee law that the state adopted, what, 30, 30 years ago? 40? You can, it, I'm getting old, guys. Yeah, the law has been there for quite some time. I think it was passed in 89, does that ring a bell, Paige? Something like 89, somewhere. So at any rate, it, the law specifies the public facility categories for which you can charge impact fees, which leaves some things out so that if they're not on the list. It talks about what's called development exactions. I love that word, exactions. Exactions is sort of another word for taxes, permit fees, et cetera, but the law calls them exactions. It talks about system improvements. You can use impact fees on system improvements, we'll talk about that a little bit more. You can set up service areas if you need to. If you want to specify a particular area in the county that you want to focus on, you can make that a service area and collect impact fees in that service area and spend them on things in that service area. Service areas are not used very often, but sometimes they're handy. Exemptions, the law provides that certain exemptions can be applied if you want to. There's basically two kinds. One kind is for affordable housing, and the other is for extraordinary economic development and employment growth. That's all the law says. It's up to you, if you want an exemption, you define it. You define what is affordable housing, you define what is extraordinary economic development and growth. And the impact fee law dovetails with your comprehensive plan, the Comprehensive Plan Act. Every five years or so, Joe, where are we on the comprehensive plan update?
It's two years ago, Joey?
Two years away.
Just a work on updating next year.
Okay, next year. So every five years or so, you'll be updating your comprehensive plan. The impact fee ordinance is an amendment to your comprehensive plan. You don't have to put it in the comprehensive plan, but it dovetails with the comprehensive plan, and that's what brings the Department of Community Affairs to the table, that they get to review your impact fee program and whatnot, because technically it's an amendment to that comprehensive plan. Development exactions, it's, this is straight out of the law. Any requirement for development approval that compels the payment, dedication, or contribution of goods, services, land, or money as a condition of approval, that's an exaction. If you have a zoning case and there's a requirement in the zoning that someone give you an acre of land for a park, that's an exaction. That's covered with the impact fee law. And in fact, the only way you can require that acre of land is through impacts, impact fees. So a lot of people just ignore that part, but that's it. If you've got an exaction, that's the only way you can get it, and it also defines development approval. It's anything that you do to allow development to occur. Building permit, rezoning, subdivision regulations, et cetera, they're all development, development So you can only impose these development exactions by way of having impact fees. And we're going to explore that a little bit more this evening, because there are things you can do, and there are things that you can only do with an impact fee program. Here's the list of all of the public facilities that are in the law. You can, you can charge impact fees in order to fund capital projects in any and all of these categories. There's two things missing on this list. One, I know why it's not on the list, and that's schools, public schools. And it's not on the list because way back when the law was passed, the state constitution said the only way you could fund schools is with a property tax. So impact fees could not have even been allowed to be collected for schools back then. It's all different today. Now we got school splasts, and we got all kinds of funding things, but 30, 40 years ago, they could only, the constitution said they could only be funded with property taxes. So that, they were left off. The other one, you put your finger on it, solid waste. I have no idea why solid waste, waste disposal was not on this list. It's just not, but I don't know, I don't know why it was left off. Nobody ever said, well, let's don't put that one on there. It just slipped through the corners or something. So the law talks about project improvements and system improvements. A project improvement is something like a road in a subdivision, a sidewalk in a subdivision. It's, it's an improvement that may be a public improvement, but it only serves just that development. You can't include that in an impact fee program. Of course, your subdivision regulations and/or your zoning requires that stuff anyway that are project improvements, but you can fund system improvements. A system improvement is a, is something that serves more than just a project. It may, it may be something that serves the whole county. It may be something that serves the northwest corner of the county, but it's more than just in a particular subdivision or a particular shopping center or whatnot, which would be project, project improvements. This, again, this wonderful word, exactions, sounds pretty horrible. All of these things are exactions. Local subdivision street, buying land for a school, building a recreation facility, these are all public facilities for, which you fund in various and sundry ways. Now, well, I thought I had this thing animated. Let me just go back. Oops. Okay, so over here on the left side, local subdivision street, D cell lane for a shopping center, those are project improvements. You don't include those in a impact fee program. The builder, the developer, the subdivider builds these because you require them to when needed. Land for schools, a new county courthouse, these are system improvements because they serve more than just a particular development. They either serve the entire county or a very large portion of the county, so you can't sit around waiting for enough subdivisions to come along to build these. But remember, schools weren't on the list. County courthouses were not on the list, so you can't use impact fees for those. Libraries and recreation facilities are two of the many categories that you can include in an impact fee program. So you sort of narrow down to the, to the types of facilities that are in the law and that you're allowed to collect impact fees for, and of course, you have to spend the money in the categories for which it was collected. You can't charge an impact fee under recreation and go spend it somewhere else. It has to be spent on recreation facilities that have been included in the program.
Hold up there just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Go back to that. Now, you're, the, yeah, you're saying that, you're saying that the impact fees can't be used for a local subdivision street, D cell lanes, that they can't be used for that?
You can use them to widen a road, because adding a lane on the road serves a whole lot of people, a lot of traffic, but a D cell lane, although it's for public safety for certain, it only serves that shopping center in this, in this case. So that's a project improvement. You make this, you make the guy building the shopping center to give you a D cell lane along the public road so that they can get their traffic out of your traffic and into their, into their shopping center.
Well, the land for the school and the courthouse, recreation and the library, I mean, we have an avenue now for that.
Sure.
I say, we, the county taxpayers do, which is if they want it put on a referendum to vote for, then that's the way we're doing it.
Yeah.
And it's specifically for that, but if a man comes in here and he says, I'm going to build a 30-store shopping center, and we're saying, fine, you've got the property and it's going to go out on 84 on one end and maybe 196 on the other end, but this is what you've got to do.
Careful, careful.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying. You can't make them do system improvements as part of their development approval. If they're going to generate so much traffic that you need a traffic signal three blocks down the road, that's a, that's a system improvement. You can't make them put that signal in. You can, with an impact fee, you can say they have to pay their fair share because that intersection improvement, that new signal, if you include it in the program, then it's a system improvement. And so, the impact fee that they pay would go to whatever extent to help pay for that signal. But right now, it's a system improvement, you can't require the, any developer to pay for a system improvement. You can have them pay for their own stuff that they themselves are going to generate, but, but not these system improvements.
Well, would water, would fire hydrants be system improvements?
Yes, but water and sewer, the fire hydrants in a subdivision would be a local subdivision improvement. You can have folks put those water lines in the subdivision, the fire hydrants in the subdivision, the sidewalks in the subdivision, because those things serve the development itself. But you can't make them build a water tower half a mile down the road because they're going to, they're going to need a lot of water, but that's a system improvement. That water tower will also serve an entire large area, not just, not just the development.
Okay, so you're the developer, you come before us. I'm trying to get this thing in my head.
Yeah, sure.
But if you come before us and say, this is what we're going to try to do with this 100 acres, well, Commissioner Fraser's got property on the backside of it, and he says, well, I'm not really against it because they're going to have, they're going to put in impact fees and they're going to have to put in fire protection. They're going to have to put in fire hydrant, so I'm closer now than what I used to be. But the impact fee itself has to have a target on it. It's got to say, this impact fee money is going to be for this particular thing, and that's it. So if you tell them you're going to put in fire protection, you can't use the impact fee money for sewer expansion or anything like that, is that correct?
That's correct. You have to do a study that determines over the next 20, 30 years, you're going to have growth. What are you going to need in new facilities to serve the county in general? And of course, it will also serve individual developments, like a big water tower somewhere. But it's a system improvement, and you can use impact fees to pay for that, that water tower, and as more development occurs in that area, you get impact fees from them also, and that money also goes to pay for that, that water tower that is serving a large area. But things that only serve, specifically serve a single development, you're not charging impact fees for that. By and large, you make the, you make the developer provide it themselves as part of the development. He's got to pave the streets in a subdivision. He's got, if you require sidewalks, he's got to build the sidewalks in the subdivision. But you can't make him build a sidewalk from his development two miles down the road because you need a sidewalk in front of the school. That's a system improvement. So that's, that's the differential, and you're dead on right exactly between what's a project improvement. Developer's got to do it anyway. Can't have a subdivision with dirt roads, or you might be able to, but you shouldn't. On the other hand, having them, having a developer pay for an improvement that might serve them a little bit, maybe a half mile down the road, a new traffic signal, it's going to serve him a little bit, but it's also going to serve a lot of other properties. And that's what impact fees are all about. They're trying to identify who needs to be participating financially in these, in these system improvements.
Well, you know, we're, I have part of Hinesville and I have Flemington. Commissioner Stevens has Riceboro, and he's got Midway. Other commissioners have got smaller cities, and that's what I'm, I'm asking these questions because it, a lot of times, they get a lot more bang for their buck because we're the ones with the buck. And I'm, I'm just seeing, you know, we got a, we got a situation... And I'm, I'm just seeing, you know, we got a, we got a situation, we're building a fire department. We actually had to build it where there was water. And the growth is there and it's gonna continue to be there, but, you know, you just can't, it, it would look to me like they can still have the growth and depend on the county to, to take care of them. And that's, that's the part there that I'm, you know, a little bit confused about.
Well, you already know that Flemington has impact fees, including fire.
Right, yeah, but Flemington's impact fee is for one thing. Flemington's impact fee says that money is gonna be used for a fire station, but they're already getting fire protection from the city of Hinesville.
Sure. Except that the city is growing. And as they grow, they're gonna need more in the way of fire protection, if you will. That's why they're talking, they're, they included a fire station in their impact fee program. Because as they grow, um, right now, they're paying Hinesville for, for fire services.
Right.
But, at some point, I mean, whether they build a fire station and hand it over to, to Hinesville, or keep it for themselves, or even come to the county. If you ever converted to a, a public fire services instead of the individual little fire districts, there again, you'd be in the, in the fire business also.
Well, I, it's got way too many questions. I'm gonna carry this home and read it. But, I mean, I can see where we, I mean, you know, we, the people ask for things and we needed, I mean, we needed a new courthouse and the only way to fund it was through sales tax.
Yeah.
And that's what we did. And, you know, you've got a builder and he's gonna come in here and build homes on a piece of property and he's gonna put the infrastructure in according to what the planning and zoning says, which is paved streets, sidewalks, fire stations, street lights or whatever, unless it's under HOA. I mean, you know, if that's it, then he's got his own thing that he's gotta look for.
Yeah.
And then, of course, right after that, here we go picking up the trash and having, you know, to deal with that. Now, I can see if an impact fee would help us with, you know, creating a larger landfill area, but I don't believe you can get that because they're gonna say, "The taxpayer's already paying taxes when he moves into the house and he's the one generating the, the trash." So, you know, it's like you're getting paid, having to pay for it twice. But, um, I could, I could see if he's building a how, a subdivision with five hundred homes and they're all coming out, you know, on a two-lane road and we say, "Well, we don't mind that, we're gonna help you, but we want this road to have D cell lane here, X cell lane here, turning lane." But, you're telling me that is not something we can do?
Well, you can, you can require a, a D cell lane at his entrance off that road. You just can't make him widen that road to handle all the traffic that's gonna be coming to his, his development because roads are specifically on the list of impact fee type projects. And that's, that's the key. Is it a project? Is it an improvement that, that, that serves just the project? Then the developer can be required to do it. If the improvement will also not only serve that subdivision, but also other subdivisions that may be coming along at some point in the future, that's a system improvement. So, that the impact fee will help pay for that system improvement as you issue building permits, if you include it on the program. Remember, you, you can select which of these do you even want in your program at all? Maybe just one of them, maybe four of them, whatever. So, whichever public facility type that you include in your program, you'll have a plan of where, or at least how much you're gonna need in the future because it's that how much and how much is it gonna cost is the basis for the impact fee.
Well, yeah, I, I just know we've got some good builders and, and they've done, you know, good, good work and a lot of them are done inside the municipalities. But, getting to those subdivisions, a lot of times, they're using county roads.
Sure.
Well, when they build it, it's paved from the dirt portion on in and everything's fine, but when they start beating their car out on the dirt portion, it's increased maintenance for us.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying, "Well, yeah, you ought to be able to do it, but we ought to have a little skin in the game." But, I don't know. I, I'm gonna look at it a little bit more. I know we ain't gonna vote on it tonight.
Oh, no. I'm just here to educate you and introduce Paige.
Well, you just saying just enough to cause me to talk the rest of the night.
We're gonna have it with that.
All right. I appreciate it.
He's trying to get in.
Mr. Chair. I, I know Commissioner Walden kinda touched bases on it, but it, it, it did make me think about it as well. So, we're looking at the project improvements, I understand. So, with that, with the D cell lane and everything, so I guess I have a question about that. Is that something that we need to look at with ordinance for the LCPC? Or should we just leave that up to us? I guess, Mr. Brown?
Yes, of course.
Like with fire hydrants and, and the new subdivisions and stuff?
Right, right, right. If there's available water supply, then they're, they're already required under subdivision ordinance to put those in.
Okay.
So, you, I think you're pretty well covered in your current ordinance for that. And then, D cell, X cell lanes are gonna depend on traffic study and G dot requirements.
Okay.
We, we even follow G dot requirements on your local roads, so.
Right, that, that's what I was.
Yes, we did take that.
Okay. And I guess another question, I think it was just answered. When are we looking at impact fee in the, the projects that are eligible? So, we could either have one project or, or we could have six of them and we could just break down a particular percentage on those. Like, say for instance, we wanna put, say fifty percent of it goes to recreation and then, you know, twenty percent goes to something else. But, will that?
Actually, actually, I believe what'll happen is you'll identify your, maybe we don't, let's don't call it project areas, let's call it eligible areas for impact.
Eligible areas, okay.
And so, let's assume maybe one is fire and one is recreation.
Right.
And so, you'll assess the fee. You, you will have a breakout in that fee that's determined by the study that's required by law to tell how much, percentage wise, if you will, does go into those accounts. The accounts were then separated on the books and kept separate so that you only spend it in those categorical areas. And then, as that growth starts to happen, let's say on the east end, around I ninety-five, and it requires another fire station to be built at a certain point level in there, those fees have accumulated so you don't have to find the capital or spend splash money to build that new station. The money's sitting there and you can go ahead and erect the new station or equipment in the current station. As a matter of fact, if fire protection's one of those.
Right. Okay. Right, that, I, I guess I just wanna get some clarification on that. And then, I know you were saying, whenever we, if we do decide to do this, if we set it up, this would be for twenty, twenty-five years? Do we have an opportunity to readjust?
Oh.
I mean, how, how does that work legally?
You ought to redo the study at least every five or six years anyway.
Okay, all right. With our comprehensive plan.
You know, you may.
There we go.
Take, take the next twenty years, five years from now, you need to add five more years to the, to the, to the study. And the study will, as Joe was saying, the study identifies what your needs are. How many more acres of parks do you need?
A lot.
How many, you know, how many more fire trucks are, do you need?
Right.
And I'm speaking as though these were county facilities. So, the, 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 the study says, "In order to maintain the level of service, you're gonna need this much more of something." How much does that, this much more, cost? If it's a hundred percent impact fee eligible, you could charge impact fees at, at the maximum amount. Many don't do that. Many adopt impact fees maybe at fifty percent level or, or whatever so that you still have a, a local financial obligation from the existing tax base to help pay for facilities that technically they don't need. And so, the impact fee is trying to, the law is trying to match up to development.
Right, to make adjustments, right.
More parkland, whatever.
Absolutely.
Road improvements. You know, you, you, you can't, you can't make a, someone who's building a subdivision go over and add a new lane on a road half a mile away even though their traffic is gonna be using that road, but a lot of other people are gonna be using that road too. So, that's a system improvement that you could include in an impact fee program.
All right. I guess another question from Mr. Brown real quick. Do we have any other municipalities in the county that currently have an impact fee?
Flemington has the impact fee that, that he discussed earlier. And Hinesville has an impact fee, it's a stormwater impact fee, but they have, they don't do any other impact fees.
Okay.
Early.
So, so, would this be something that we need to look at countywide, just not with us and all the municipalities? I guess that's what Commissioner Walden was kinda fetching bases with, right?
I, I was just saying, and I know Flemington had one, Commissioner Frazier, and just me personally, everybody's got their own opinion, but I think that this ought to be, if you haven't presented it to the outline municipalities, we need to see who's got it. And then, we'd know about buying in onboard because, you know, it's kinda like you buy a brand-new grater, well, guess what? We're gonna wear it out on, on the city streets.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with that, there's still taxpayers, but I just don't know, I just, I do know that Flemington has, and I do know that that money is earmarked for a fire station, but there's an extreme amount of growth down there that, you know, I didn't notice in this handout, but used to, and Commissioner Lovey, you can bring a little bit more light on it, we used to have impact fees for schools.
Still do.
And it didn't, it didn't make no difference if it was sidewalks, lunchrooms, whatever. It says, "Impact fees," and it was for education. Now, I know we had, back when they started the QuickBooks and stuff like that, you know, but, impact fees and the ones that I remember was in schools, ain't that right, Joey? I mean, that was the first ones we had and it was basically for building schools.
Yeah, it was actually, I think, I think it was actually just money that was assessed to the number of military populations served.
But, the military impacted us.
Correct. And it was, it was actually a percentage that was distributed by the federal government. Then, everybody you could certify as a military affiliate.
Mm-hmm.
So, it wasn't really assessed locally.
That's why we was in school.
Uh, it, it was, it was something that was picked up actually under the Tribal Act.
But, all of this right here is some way federally impacted. I mean, the state's gonna give you a little bit every once in a while, but this is what it's all about. So, it's, it's about the same thing, Mr. Frazier. I, I mean, I know the, you know, when you got two of them, and I mean, I'm fortunate enough that Hinesville's got one and Flemington's got one, but, you know, we start in a water system and I know that Commissioner Stevens can put his finger on where the water comes just inside, just outside the city limits in Midway and it quits. And I mean, whatever we gotta try to do to, to work and try to, you know, make this thing because, you know, the territory is still gonna be Liberty County and I'm for helping everybody, but I just, you know, I think this probably oughta been a workshop and I'm glad it's not a, you know, an action item, but we.
That's why I wanted to go ahead and finish for us if you, we kinda stop you in the middle of a.
Well, it's all right, but I'm, I'm, I'm here to help.
You didn't bring any of the listeners, did you? I was asking.
And I think, you know, terminology, you can, you can call anything an impact fee, but the impact fees that are covered by the law are the, are what you specifically charge when you issue a building permit. Now, school impact stuff, well, of course, they can call it an impact fee, but it's not covered by this law which focuses on new development as opposed to just anybody with kids, so. Um, let's see here, we were coming along. We were talking about level of service and that's, that's a critical thing because impact fees, generally, you try to at least maintain your current level of service, which means you've gotta expand some of these facilities as, as growth goes on. And you could, in fact, you could set a level of service higher than your current level of service. Now, the general taxpayers have to kick in to, to, because you're increasing services for everybody. You could set the level of service below and new development would only have to pay that small portion. It's always up to you what you do with, with impact fees if you're going to have them at all. There's a lot of flexibility. In most cases, the impact fee study will tell you the maximum fee you could charge. You can't, the maximum means you can't charge more. The law says you can't charge new development more than their fair share. You can charge it less. And most communities actually set their impact fees below the maximum. We got several that are right up there at the, at the maximum, but you don't have to charge the maximum. You, you decide where that impact fee ought to be. And I mentioned that impact fees are also kinda part of the whole comprehensive planning process because this capital improvements element, the CIE, I keep talking about, it's an amendment to your comprehensive plan. Doesn't have to be in it. Mostly, it's, it's a, it's a separate document, but it technically amends your comprehensive plan because the comprehensive, what comprehensive plan does what? Talks about improvements that you're gonna need in the future to address new development. They, they kinda go hand, hand in hand. So, this is, this is what a capital improvements element does. What are we gonna need? What are the improvements we will need to either maintain our level of service or maybe improve the level of service, or maybe not even meet the level of service? That's, that's up to you. What are the capital improvements that are gonna be needed? And of those capital improvements, which ones fall into one of those impact fee categories? Schools is a good example. More and more subdivisions, more and more kids, schools have to expand to handle all these extra kids. They're not impact fee eligible. So, the Board of Education at the county need to find other ways to, to fund school expansions, for instance. They can't use impact fees to do it. The DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, they're, they're kind of the umpires on all these impact fees. The DCA has adopted minimum standards that an impact fee study has to address. If you get into the impact fee business, you'll have to prepare an annual report every year. How much money, in impact fees, how much money did you collect? How much did you spend? What'd you spend it on? How much interest did you make on it that gets distributed across the, the impact fee categories? Critical thing is that money can only be, impact fee income can only be spent on the categories for which it was collected. If you have parks and recreation, roads and animal control all in your program, your, your CIE will say, "Okay, this much is, is, goes to, goes to roads and this much goes to animal control." The money goes into those accounts, is the finance director, oh, she's gonna, oh, hey, she's, she is the police officer on impact fees. She'll have to keep track of how much was collected for these various categories that you, that you decide that you want to include. And she also has to be sure that the money that goes into those accounts are only spent on projects for those accounts. That's what the study tells you. The study tells you, "How many more fire trucks do we..." Well, fire, fire is not a good example right now. If you... If you had a county fire department, how much money is gonna?
We do.
Oh, 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 I thought they were all volunteer.
Now, we upgraded, man.
That's good, no, that's good. Fire is, fire is an excellent example.
We're a little bit ahead of you, impact.
That's good, that is good. So at any rate, you'll, you'll, the finance director will bring you an annual report that you have to send in to the state for review. How much did you collect? What'd you spend? What'd you spend it on? And how much is left over? And the impact fee law has a very unique definition of, you know, the dedication of, of encumbrances, encumbrance. Generally, finance people say you can encumber money because you've signed a contract that says, well, you're gonna go build something, and it's gonna cost this much money, so you can encumber, as monies come in, you can encumber it for that project. Impact fees are much looser in terms of encumbrances, because unlike the generally accepted legal definition of encumber, the impact fee law has a little wrinkle in it that says that you can encumber money because, of course, you have a contract, or you know you're gonna, maybe you have a lease agreement on something, or any other action of the governing body. Annual report you adopt every year and send that to the state, you're gonna tell the state, we got this much money, the CIE has all these projects, when we adopt that annual report, that is an any other action which encumbers that money right off the bat. If you don't encumber it within six years of when you collect it, you have to give it back. So encumbering the money is very important, you never have to make a refund six years later, because you didn't encumber or spend the money. You've, you encumber it every, every year as the, as you do those annual reports. This is kind of a diagram of the impact fee study. We do, we do something called a methodology report. The methodology report has everything you ever wanted to know about the impact fees, the current level of service, or the future level of service, the inventory, how many fire stations have you got, how many fire trucks have you got, et cetera, in order to establish those level of service. From the methodology report, you pull out the capital improvements element. You don't have to send the whole methodology report into the state, you only have to send that, that CIE. And basically, the projects that you intend to, to fund, and the money you're gonna hope, hope to collect, that doesn't go in the CIE. The CIE is a much more general document compared to the methodology report. That goes into the state for their usual 60-day review period, and while during that 60-day review period, that's, that's when it'd be time to develop the impact fee ordinance, get that squared away, and also decide, what do you want to charge? I mentioned the methodology report will tell you the maximum, you can't charge more, you can charge less, so that the, the board will end up saying, you know, well, let's, let's cut this one 50%, let's only do 20%, you know, that kind of thing, in the process of deciding what you actually want to charge for impact fees. Also, working with the staff, set up the, the necessary processes and procedures for dealing with this money, and keeping track of it. And also, the impact fee ordinance will have appeals processes in it. If somebody's not happy with their, having to pay their impact fee, they can appeal the impact fee. Most of this is handled at the administrative level, but if the administrator can't solve the problem, it, it, it may come to you. Sometimes somebody says, okay, I run a pizza parlor. Pizza parlor's on the list for an impact fee, but my pizza parlors are very different from everybody else's. We only deliver, you can't come and get your pizza, for instance. So they might appeal and say, well, I shouldn't have to pay the full impact fee, because I'm not creating the demand for public services that a pizza parlor down the, down the street does. And so there's a, there's a plan review process at the staff level to decide, you know, what would be a fair impact fee for that use. Again, if it can't be resolved at the staff level, you become the, you become the jury.
Let me ask you, Mr. Chairman. Got a question. I might be in front of you or behind you, I don't know. You're talking about, how much would somebody pay who's building a $200,000 house, roughly? What would be the amount that they would roughly pay?
We have one house? They have, they will say.
Well, it depends on, I mean, doing the study to find out what the impact, what the maximum could be, and then deciding, well, are we gonna, you know, chase home builders out of this county with, if we charge 100%? Remember, your impact fee advisory committee's gotta have at least 50% of those members are gonna be in the building and development community. They may be mortgage bankers, they may be builders, whatever, but they have to be involved in the development community. So it's a very open process in terms of, you know, as the studies progress, and I guarantee you, you will hear people express their opinions about, about it.
So, quick note, homeowners directly wouldn't pay it. They would pay it at time, probably, of buying that lot from the developer. Because the developer of the, of the subdivision's gonna pay it upfront for the potential impact, totally for the subdivision, it's, it's not assessed per homeowner.
And the, the home builders pay the impact fee either when they get the building permit or before a CO is issued, and they turn right around and put it, you know, on the backside of that closing statement down near, near the bottom, where it always says, you know, I paid a building permit, you know, I had to pay $56 for, for this or that, I have to pay $150 for FedEx across town? What are they FedExing? At any rate, that's where they usually put the impact fee.
So, so, so basically, you're saying, we, we can have an adjusted impact fee if, if Commissioner Stevens was billing 100 homes, and Commissioner, to my left, who has more money, is billing 300 homes, the impact fee, it'd be adjusted by the amount of homes you're selling, correct?
Based on impact.
Based on the impact of the, of the broader.
Everybody would pay the same fee per house.
Per house, yeah.
Right, so in other words, it still would be.
By magnitude of impact.
There we go.
Basically, a good way to look at it, right?
They do them here in town by lot. I mean, you've got, you've got Griffin Park, let's just say they paid, the city of Hinesville had 100 and something lots, they pay, and Mr. Dryden goes in there, he's got to pay X number of dollars for inspections.
Right.
Then he's got to pay impact fees, and then, I guess, there may be, and, I was trying to sit here and figure, okay, can I take the impact fee money and satisfy it by putting in water and sewer in this subdivision, and it'll go all the way through to the back, where y'all gonna build a school, and y'all can utilize that? I, I mean, I don't, that's just a, a question that I had, but I know that, you know, every lot had about the same amount of impact fee money. Now, you get on the coast, you may have a 10-lot subdivision, that, you know, every house, there'd be a million dollars. You can't necessarily say that they're gonna impact what's going on in Hinesville, they may all impact what's going on in Savannah, so, you know, I don't know, there's just, to me, there's a lot of questions I have about it that.
There's a lot of study have to be put behind this.
Yeah, yeah, we.
That's what the study is all about.
We definitely need to have a subcommittee or something, put together, Mr. Chairman. But I thought this was a question. Put like a subcommittee to review this, and see where we need to go.
I mean, we, I'm not unfamiliar with impact fees, I'm just, I, I knew they did it in Hinesville, we've never done it. I, I know they're trying to, they're looking at it in Long County. I don't know if you're.
Yeah, Long's got them.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, they're got it, they got it in the city, but have they?
They've done it in the county, yeah.
Yeah, it's a county, county impact fee in Long County.
Actually, they did it.
Yeah, and, and.
And it worked.
Yeah, I mean, to close out, a good, a good example of that is.
Expand your water system after it reaches a certain number of users, and then what? And so you anticipate what that expansion will be, and then you anticipate the costs. And basically, as new subdivisions are built and they come on, there's a, a unit assessment, so to speak, per unit that, that impacts that system, and so they pay in advance, but you having to go in there and expand that system further, and so that you got the money accumulated. So it's, it's a futuristic advancement of funds for infrastructure, that's what.
Your school system had, you know, is, is a really problem, which, you know, when you get to looking, then they're, they build more homes. I mean, now 57, now that's, you learn something, new homes is over there, and then there's more areas, but there's no water, you know, now there, that's an issue that, and that may be what they're, they're looking at.
That's, that's a good example, and a, and a waste water, I'm not sure they, I'm not sure that their impact fee covers waste water to do it, and I think what they're running into is a waste water problem for distribution, and probably should have been included in an impact fee before this was done for bill, that's been here there. That's a good example.
All right. It's a lot of information.
I think, I think, I don't know, this just summarizes the process again, about the capital improvement, et cetera, and if everything works out, you figure out that the impact fees are you want to charge as part of your ordinance, and the state finishes their review of the comprehensive plan, and then the CIE represents it, hopefully, you say it all. You don't have to all come at the same time, so, quite often, you get both of those to, to adopt at the same time. And here's an example of the schedule, I'm not gonna go into the details, but basically, it's a, it's about an eight, eight-month process, including the two months that are, the, the, the CIE is under review by the, by the state. As a new community, you will need to have the advisory committee, that's a one-time thing in the future, as you amend, if you adopt impact fees and you amend them in the future, you do not have to have an advisory committee, you can have one if you want, but it's not, the only requirement is that one, that committee wants, first to the impact fee, of, of study. The fact is.
That's the last one.
The other questions, I'll be happy to, happy to at least make up an answer.
I'll do that. Can I make a suggestion? Have we put together like a subcommittee to, whether to review this information and see if, as from a county, if we need to move forward, or which direction we need to go with even bringing in other municipalities, or, or anything like that?
I think the first thing to do is for us to take it back and look at it, and let us come back, and with our recommendations, because this is a lot of information, as you all have just said, once reviewed, then we'll come back with, but it's not, and I have the issue with you saying how others have done it, and maybe have done it different ways. You know, too, but our first thing is, is commissioners, let us take it back and, and digest it.
And we're, I mean, we're working in Savannah, we've started, just picked off, up in, and already, Long County already adopted it, and there are other folks that are, that are in this, but we're down here pretty, pretty, pretty.
With the plan, it certainly requires a, that's, that's, that's a given, it'll be done, it'll be done.
You, you know, this is a reminder, I know you all remember, that you, this was something came up in your planning session this year, to look at it, so we did budget funds, should you decide to move forward with the cost of building the state.
And I simply see where it can be very advantageous to the county, to the growing needs that we have here.
One thing I like you talking about, so, wondering, I like.
Anybody remember when a fire truck only cost $500,000? Well, 1.2 million.
Mr., 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 Mr. Rothkin, can we get off the fire? Trust me.
I like the broad-based approach.
I will, otherwise, I just won't show up again.
All right.
We'll be in touch, sir.
Thank you so much.
Eddie, what time you said that game was?
6:15.
It's pouring down, right? Ain't no rain now.
Or it's halftime.
Alcoholic beverage license request, Wetland Spirits.
Yes, sir, this is a new location, name of applicants, Berthel Webb, Wetland Spirits, 5195 Highway 196, the Planning Commission and Sheriff's Department both have reviewed it and recommend approval.
It's a new business?
Believe it is.
Yes, sir.
Where's it located? Where's it?
Where's this at?
Just kind of catedchord from the convenience store.
Really?
There used to be a church in that area. It's the only little shopping plaza we have.
Yeah, it's right in there.
Yes, sir. I would make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you second, we approve the alcoholic beverage license from Wetland Spirits, any further discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, please. License is approved. Announcements?
My birthday's in December.
I have something I want to talk to Joey, mention to Joey. Joey, I, I copied you on the email, I don't know if I copied the chairman, but I finally got in touch with somebody from the DOT after, after years of trying, but I met with a guy from the, I guess it's the field office down in Riceburg, and we talked for about an hour, he gave me a list of things that he can't do, a list of things that he won't do, a list of things that he ain't gonna do, and a list of things that he don't wanna do. And I got his supervisor's number, and we made some.
Progress?
Yeah, some progress, so, but, but what I would like to do, I, I would like to get Mayor Willis, you know, 'cause I was speaking on behalf of the city of Allenhurst, and, and the mayor was down there, but I've been emailing, 'cause I don't know the mayor's email address, but I've been kind of acting on their behalf, and Larry, Mayor Baker, he wants to talk to, so I, I'll get in touch with you sometime in the next couple of weeks, and I'll see if I could get Councilman Steve Welborn, Mayor Willis, and maybe Larry, and myself, and you, and Mr. Mosley, the chairman, and maybe Eddie or somebody, and we could come in and, and talk about some of the stuff that, that the DOT may could help us with, and what we may could do as the county to try to, try to supplement that. Allenhurst needs a, needs a whole lot of help. I mean, you know, they right between Heinzville and Waltheville, Heinzville has a full public works department, or Waltheville has a, a smaller one, they, they do some things, but Allenhurst doesn't have anything, and I'm working with him to, to get a contractor, someone to come in and, and do some stuff, kind of like Flemington did with Jody Smiley. So, you know, we, we've made some progress, and DOT is gonna, they're gonna help us, but they, they won't give us near the help that, that we need, so we need to look at that. I know we were gonna talk about the intergovernmental agreement, and, you know, what all is involved in that, so that, that may be a good start, but they do need some help. When you take that ride going west on 84, and you get to Allenhurst, you can, you can see the difference, even if it wasn't a sign that tell you that you were leaving Heinzville, or, or entering Waltheville, you know that you're somewhere that doesn't have the, that's not getting attention, and, you know, if we, Liberty County proud, we need to try to, that's a major thoroughfare, it's a lot of traffic on 84, and we do need to try to clean it up if we can, so we'll, we'll see. But DOT did, the second call was a lot better than the first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Could that include, like Riceburg and Midway, what you, what you're looking at when you bring all of them together?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the smaller municipalities, if we can add some services or something in there, and you see what, you know, what the fee would be, but I think it would include, it, it need to include all of them, 'cause, you know, the, the county has, we have a wealth of. because, you know, the, the county has, we have a wealth of equipment and experience. These smaller cities don't, but they do need some kind of help of some kind.
If you don't mind, let me.
Okay, okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, they gotta come right through Riceburg to get down there.
I mean, I know you and Eddie, you know, y'all close, but you know, maybe I might be sitting.
It ain't, it ain't, it ain't like that. I mean, we look at everything, I mean, it really and truly, seriously.
But the, the intergovernmental agreement, I think, would benefit.
Right.
Benefit everybody, but yeah, but I am gonna, I'm gonna bring Walthiville and, and Allenhurst to meet with Joey within the next couple of weeks if we can schedule that, so.
And Mr. Chairman, along those notes, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn here because I, I'll tell you, the company, the ESG and, and Jody, they do a good job. I mean, really and truly, but if we've got an area that's, that needs to be some work done to it, I, we ought to have some type of intergovernmental agreement with even these folks. You know, the, Gary has to stay out of it or whatever, but, I mean, right now, there has been nothing done in Allenhurst. I know since probably March, there is somebody that goes out there, you know, mom and pop guy. I, I think Mr. Moody actually tries to keep it up, but, you know, if we've got to get that done, Clinton does not have the personnel to get out there on that state route. I mean, you've got to have signage, you've got to have one-lane road, you've got to have police protection and stuff like that. So whatever, we gotta do, if we gotta have some type of a, you know, we wouldn't be using them all the time, but if we have to, let's do it.
Yeah, the, the DOT guy told me, he said that, you know, he'll, he'll come in and he'll replace a stop sign and every now and then they do an inspection, they'll ride through there and take a look at it. You know, and you see, yeah, it really does look bad, but that was about it.
All right, sir, thank you, thank you for, for intervening on behalf of our other municipalities. I will say, the, the talks with the, with them municipalities about loss has been real good. Mr. Brown, I will be reporting to you on that real soon. And out of that conversation, I think you'll find a higher level of conflict with some of the, you know, government agreements that we have. Maybe some need to be tweaked, you know, but for the most part, the small cities were open to being, what's the word, you're more forthcoming, you know, yeah. So, so it's a good report, that's what's a good report.
Larry stopped by at an office the other day and he said it was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting. It was a good meeting. You all will be proud, it was a good meeting. Announcement, sir?
Yes, sir.
You have to get it ordered?
Of all hearts, sir, minds are clear.
You're entertaining motion, Mr. Chairman?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, show your hand.